Sean Morrison, Capital Development Division Manager in Public Works, and I'm also acting as the city's project manager on this project.
I'm Rihim Hargi, and one of the assistant managers at City.
I'm McBurney, majority owner of Hillsborough Hops.
And Kayla Wambacher, President and GM of Hillsborough Hops.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we have a work session where we are going to be discussing a number to the expansion, what we were originally expanding around Tonkin Field and some of the changes over the past couple of months have been worked through. So if we want to go to the next slide. We give a little bit of background, and so last year, I guess it's been a year and a half ago, maybe, the hops were elevated to high A baseball, and as a result of that, they ended up having a longer season going all the way from April to September. Included with those changes also was some new requirements that Major League Baseball had for all these new, these teams to be able to meet. And those were requirements that our current facility did not meet. And so we began to discuss how we can create those changes within our current facility. And we needed to do that by twenty four, twenty, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. So it was a very accelerated timeframe. And we also identified there were some opportunities as well, right? Along with these requirements that we had, we wanted to take this opportunity to re-envision what else we could do with the hops. And the hops have really done a great job also of re-envisioning what this could be. Our approach here is going to win a partnership. We've been having many, many meetings with the hops. Our staff have done a great job working on this with them as well. We've tried to approach this from a community benefit standpoint and what we can do and how this facility can create even more of a community benefit than it even already has. We wanted to make sure that we do what we can to mitigate any loss of use. And we're going to be expanding a facility and potentially affecting other facilities around it, and we need to mitigate that somewhere in the community. We need to weigh against other priorities that we have, which are many within the city as well. And then finally, we just needed to make sure that this is going to be a project that was financially sustainable for everybody involved. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Rahim, who's going to take the next section.
Thanks, Robbie. So let me just recap on our last work session that we met with you. So since the time we came to you last, the design building, which our contractors, 40% with SRJ, popular as being their subcontractors, have continued to move towards a 10% design phase, and Sean will talk a little bit more about that. Most of the 10% work was around programming and concepts of our Ron Tonkin. Through that process, we realized we have some challenges with Ron Tonkin field, which I'll go through in a minute. So they pivoted and worked towards a 10% desired alternative location, which we'll go over. What we've also done is we slightly changed our proposed funding structure where the last time you saw us come to you was that the proposal, let's say, would fund $10 million from TLT and basically cash them a $30 million loan on TLT. We pivoted a little bit to recommending an $18 million contribution through TOT with no loan. Suzanne will talk a little bit about that. The hops have made a lot of progress in securing some private financing, which they can talk a little bit about at that time. Remember Suzanne, again, we'll go over some history on the agreements, but essentially those are the ones that we had in place. Initially, we had an M U U with the hops when this first came up about an explicit negotiating agreement that you were going to just work with us, nobody else, because we were connected to us. And I think they were happy to sign that, let them speak that. That was strong partnership, and they just signed it to that. City Council approved the interim cost allocation agreement that talked about how we would work together and who would fund what as we go through this exploring phase. We have an M U U that we signed with the hops to kind of pivot a little bit so that we're all on the same page about exploring an alternative location of JPRC, which we'll see shortly. And then tonight on your regular agenda, you have tried us with consideration today. So just a reminder of where we were. We were moving forward and looking at what an expansion looks like at Ron Tonkin Field. Through some of that 10% work that we did, we had an estimate that came in at about $160 million. And that was after scaling back a couple of things that could really be good advantages for the facility. Obviously, $160 million is a lot of money. And there were still some challenges with the site, the remodel. There was utility conflicts, there's a lot of water main parking lot that would need to be moved. Still would have some challenges with shared space, especially with the Hillsborough Stadium, that we still would have to figure out how to work through. There was some construction sequencing with making sure that the area was usable while we're having seasons, that we have to still play. And then at the time, because we were doing a remodel, we would only be allowed a 2024, you know, deadline. Get, we had to get this thing in place by the 2024. There were a lot of challenges with this particular approach. We were constrained by a footprint of Ron Tonkin Field, we couldn't go out, it's hard to go out. And even when we could squeeze going out, there was this utility conflict. And with that option, we were looking at most of our loss of use at Brownville School, this project we're working on with the Hillsborough School District, to just redo some of the fields there so that they have more use. So through this work, we wanted to explore what an alternative approach could look like that may save us a little bit of money. And maybe a little, not necessarily just easier to build, but more functional to build. So we looked at, what if we built a new site, a new stadium specifically dedicated to baseball and events, concerts and things like that, where fields four, five and six, just to kind of orient you, that's the north side of the Gordon-Favor Recreation Complex. Those four, five and six are what are circled in red. So just a little more of a zoom in view, yeah, feel for our issue softball place, most Seattle, five and six. So this is just a very, very early site plan, not even just a rendering, just a site plan of what a new stadium would look like on that site. So we wanted to make sure, if we're going to explore it, let's just make sure it can fit first. And obviously it can. We have a lot more flexibility with that site. So as we started doing, as we pivoted and started looking at that 10% design cost, which is still at a conceptual level, right? The estimates came in at $120 million for pretty good build. They included most everything to meet the minimum requirements, but also designed it in a way that it could accommodate concerts and other events, and it's essentially designed for future of what we want, not necessarily just having to fit that into the footprint we have. Obviously, with a building and new site, we don't have those constraints. We don't have those utility conflicts that we were talking about. We don't have that shared space between the football stadium and having to still navigate some of those challenges. And then through some conversations that we had with the hops, with MLB, building a new stadium gives us another year on the construction, on the construction timeline. So that just allowed us a lot more room and flexibility as well. And then with this opportunity, Robbie will talk a little bit more about this later in the presentation. It just gives us more, gives us an opportunity to reimagine where Ron Tonkin Field could look like. There's other things that we can start attracting like softball events, things like that in the basic state. And then we're still working through this, that's why you see the word draft. We're looking at what it would take to mitigate lost use on fields four, five and six, but also considering that we would get Ron Tonkin Field back all year round, and we wouldn't have to share that with the hops. So we're working through that. We're looking at some options of maybe turfing some fields on site that are not tured. And then Brownville School is still something we're considering.
So I'll turn it over to Sean to talk a little bit more about site improvement. All right, so like Rahim mentioned, we hit the 10% mark on the expansion project and we got the cost estimate back. And we needed to explore an alternative. So we were really using some savings from the 10% design to take on an alternative analysis, and so we weighed those two options side by side, and we decided to press forward with the new build. So we're at 10% design, actually a little bit past 10% design on the new site. And all of the program that we, that we developed during the the first build or the expansion project, we're able to reuse all of that and move it on to the new build. So now we're working towards completing our 35% design on the new build, which should conclude around the end of this month. And some of the challenges that we're having right now, we're trying to figure out, we're thinking a few, you know, four, five, six months out in advance and trying to align the procurement schedule with constructions, with early construction schedule and with the financing and funding structure that we have in place. So that's something that we're working on right now. So after 35%, the next milestone will be the 65% design, which will include the design package plus schedule and cost estimate, and it also include the guaranteed maximum price or GMP, you're going to hear that term kicked around a lot. That's basically going to be the balance of design of 200% plus the majority of our construction. So what you'll see on new business item 8.1 in the regular session tonight is the amendment to the Mortensen contract that will get us to 65%. We've also included an allowance in there for early procurement because we have some long lead items that are right now projected to take over a year to get in. That will be critical to the construction of this facility. And we also put in an allowance for early construction that will allow us to open the site, dig it out in the summer so that we're not battling the weather season. It'll give us an opportunity to stabilize the site as we move into wet weather and mitigate, you know, environmental issues. And like I said, the GMP will be included in that 65%. So the next time, if all goes well, the next time you should see us for another authorization should be to authorize the guaranteed maximum price.
Hey, I'll spill my water. All right, so I guess I'm going to talk about finances now, surprise, surprise, from me, the finance director. So I want to first orient you and ground you in the scale and scope of the project that we originally had talked about and envisioned to what we're looking at now. And I realize you're going to hear some of these numbers several different times tonight, so and some terminology like GMP, because I'll be saying that as well. So hopefully after hearing it three or four times, it'll really start to sink in. So on the left here, you see the Ron Tonkin remodel, and we had, as was mentioned previously, been looking at potentially $160 million, and that, that was potentially on the low side with a lot of the constraints of the project that Rahim referenced. What we had budgeted for and what's included in our 2223 budget is a, because what had been contemplated was $10 million contribution from transient lodging tax and a $30 million loan from the city to the hops that would be paid back over time through an agreement with the hops. So that was what was originally envisioned in terms of the city's contribution to the project, and the hops were going to make up the rest. I'm including payment on that $30 million loan. So that was intended to be a 20 or 25 75 split initially, with on the 40 million, and then the hops would be making up the delta with up to $100 million potentially in financing, as well as the 30 million in financing plus some state funding that they had hoped to seek out. This on the left side, that also intended to make up the lost use, some of the lost use on the project. So now switching to the right is the new project, so the new ball field. We're now looking at an $18 million contribution in transient lodging tax. In the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about transient lodging tax. We do plan to, if this is approved, we do plan to finance that our contribution to this over time. If we don't have this $18 million sitting in the bank, so we'd likely come back in front of you with a financing, authorizing resolution to be able to move forward with that financing. So that project contribution would be about 2080 split. If you look at the interim cost allocation that you're going to see at 8.2B tonight, assumes for the 65% design that we move from a 25, 75 split to a 2080 split based on what we're seeing in terms of the cost to date. The remodel project for the MLB would have needed to be completed by the 24 season, as previously mentioned. The, we spoke with the MLB directly along with, alongside the hops, and with the move to a new ballpark, they were much more inclined to be able to push that out to the 25 season. So that is the expenses that we were looking at initially and where we are headed with this new ballpark. So next slide, please. So just want to take a few minutes to talk about transient lodging taxes specifically and what they can and can't be used for. So currently, the city gets a share of the county transient lodging tax, and that is 9% for hotel stay within the city limits of Hillsborough and Washington County. The city receives 2.5% of that 9%. That equates to approximately $1.6 million in our last really good year prior to COVID. That was 1920. So that $1.6 million comes into our general fund and funds our general operations of the city, including fire, fireworks, et cetera. And there is also a state tax, hotel transient lodging tax, which is 1.5%, which the city receives, does not receive any of that. And then in addition to that, there is a city transient lodging tax that was enacted back in August 2017. It does sunset after 10 years of the city council, you all, whoever's on the council at that time will need to take an action to re-up that, that tax. This is governed under ORS 320, 350. 70% of net revenue from a new or increased transient lodging tax, I believe the date is after 2003, shall be used to fund tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities. We believe that the ballpark would fall under the tourism-related facilities. So frankly, any tax, 70% of the tax that we have as a city needs to go towards tourism-related facilities or tourism-related promotion. The revenue received again in 1920 for our transient lodging tax, our local tax was 1.93. 30% of that is going into our general fund and being used for general fund operations, and 70% of that needs to be anchored to a project like this. So what we've historically used that for since 2017 has been a contribution to the event center, Wingspan, we contributed 18, not 18, I want to say 18, that's not the right project. $8 million to Wingspan. Additionally, annually contribute to the Washington County Visitors Association, which also attracts from further, what a deal dimension is, the idea is that you're putting heads in bets. So your folks that pay this tax are usually coming from a distance of at least 50 miles away before they're going to probably spend the money to stay in a hotel. So the idea is that that additional tax actually feeds tourism and feeds the local economy. So just wanted to be very clear that we have to, if we want to continue this tax, we have to anchor it to something that does do what we've just discussed. It wouldn't work for things like fire stations, it wouldn't work for things like swimming pools unless you're going to build the, you know, maybe the, what is it up in Olympia, can't remember that, Great Wall Lodge, which I don't think we're intending to do anytime soon here. So it's just had the very, when we talk about restricted use of funds, this does have some restricted use to it. So we just wanted to make that clear. Next slide, please. So to date, on the ballpark, we have spent $2.1 million in all the planning, concept planning, economic impact analysis, designing work to date, which has been the biggest amount, approximately $2 million. As Sean mentioned, we're nearing or getting close to the 35% sign on the new ballpark. And most of what we have expended on remodel option on Ron Tonkin have been able to be repurposed into the shift to the new ballpark. All costs on the design to date have been borne by the city and fall within what we're calling the first interim cost allocation agreement that we're currently operating under. That, if approved tonight, we will revert to the second interim cost allocation agreement, and it will sunset the first interim cost allocation agreement. The second interim cost allocation agreement, again, 8.2 on your agenda tonight, seeks to, to apportion the funding and mitigate the cost and risks of that 65% design. So it assumes that we will advance forward this project up to that 65% sign. It was $8.3 million, of which the city is, cap is at 20%, and the hops is at 80%. Funds to data to come from the project that was budgeted in 2223, which is that $40 million I referenced earlier, which we will not be spending all of. So keep in mind that we are currently using cash on hand for this 2.1 million and likely up to that 35 to 65% sign. Next slide, please. So just to orient you to the various agreements that we've been talking about. So just to refresh your memory, we are currently operating under an agreement with the hops for the existing stadiums. We have a licensing agreement and a naming's right, a naming's rights agreement with the hops currently. So obviously, eventually, we'll need to have a licensing agreement with the hops for the new ballpark. So what we've been able to put in place to mitigate the risk and costs on both the hops and the city are what we're calling these interim cost allocation agreements, which has allowed us the path to keep on schedule, but also mitigating our costs and our risks. So that first interim cost allocation agreement had that 2575 split to get us to a 35% sign. And the second one has its 2080 split to get us to that 65% design or guaranteed maximum price. So it's allowing us, these interim agreements are allowing us to advance forward to a guaranteed maximum price. It's providing us the time needed to secure the additional financing. The hops need time to secure that financing, certain milestones need to be met in order to someone to loan that type of funding to, to the hops. So this is allowing and affording us that time. It's also providing us an opportunity to negotiate that final agreement. So we're working on the term sheet, we have a great team that's working on that, we have a first draft, and we hope to start passing that back and forth between the hops here as early as the next couple of weeks. And with that final agreement, we'll ultimately have in it our roles and responsibilities between the two parties, between the hops and the city of Hillsborough, including things like programming, operations and maintenance of the new facility, how we, how we manage parkings, shared parking, facilities will be split, unlike they would have Ron Tonkin, but the parking will still be shared. Any payments, schedules and terms of the agreement, and of course, how we manage future costs. And those are the agreements. I turn it over to Robbie.
Thanks Suzanne. So a few of the things that we wanted to bring up tonight. We've been working on this for, I think, about a year and a half now. It's been a lot of work to get to this point, really, we're still beginning, we have a whole lot of work left to do. And we've talked about a lot of these things already, but first off, the hops are still working on finalizing their private financing. That's going to be a big part for the next few months. This is not a typical project, right? Normally, when we identify a need of the community, we figure out that need, that we can figure out funding sources, and, you know, take our time planning the construction phases and all that. This is not that type of a project because we have these deadlines that we need to meet with Major League Baseball. And I just want to give a big kudos to the hop staff, to our staff. It's been pretty tremendous to get to this point, it's really complicated, and there's a lot of this complicated work to continue. We talk about the schedule later this summer is when we hope to have that guaranteed maximum price that you've heard about tonight. That's kind of the next really big step for us. And also, you heard earlier as well that during the next couple of years of construction, if this is what the council chooses to do, there will be some changes to programming, you know, programming there on Tonkin Field at the Gordon-Favor Recreation Complex will be impacted, and so we're going to need to work through all of that with our park staff. And I know they've already started thinking about how we can do that. City financing, Suzanne did a great job talking about our use of transient lodging tax, and I just want to echo that. This is a really good use of transient lodging tax funding. That's a question that we get often. These are funds that have to be used on this type of project. They cannot be used on things like water rates or transportation projects or libraries and public safety. So we'll continue to work through that and ensure that we have that transient lodging tax funding available. And then as they mentioned as well, working through the licensing and use agreement, that's, those are complicated. They are, and we have a great partnership with the hops, so we're confident we'll be able to work through those. But they're complicated agreements to go through, so a lot of work to be done still. And then some of the opportunities, again, you've heard some of these tonight, but they're important to highlight. This is going to be an amazing facility in the heart of Hillsborough. There won't be another facility like this in the region, and that's a wonderful asset to have in our community. It gives us a chance to reimagine Ron Tonkin Field. I'm really excited about this, we've already had some meetings with our park staff, I know they're thinking a lot about this, there's many meetings to come. There's ways we can use this for softball purposes moving forward, for additional soccer purposes moving forward in all sorts of ways. So I'm actually really excited to figure out how to reimagine Ron Tonkin Field and what that looks like in the future. Another thing that we didn't talk about much is currently the hops occupy some office space there around Tonkin Field that will now become the city's as well, office space is not cheap, and we could use it because we continue to grow as a city. That's another opportunity that we can use to house some of our city staff as well. It's increasing recreation opportunities, you heard Rahim talking about Brown Middle School. Brown is, it's a wonderful opportunity, Brown Middle School, we've already had lots of conversations with Hillsborough School District. We also continue to talk to the county, you know, we maintain the softball fields at the county fairgrounds area, and so there's opportunities there. So that's another area that we're focusing on. Revenue potential with the hops, with Ron Tonkin Field, we always try to consider ways, if you're tournaments and other ways that we can maximize that whole area and working with the hops, working with their staff there at the Gordon-Favor Recreation Complex, such as tournaments, right? We already host some tournaments and potentially having Ron Tonkin Field now as a stadium dedicated softball, for example, could open up new opportunities for us as well. And I think I turn it over to the hops at this point.
All right, well, first off, I just want to start by saying if we put in a couple of water slides, can you get 20 more? No, I'm sorry, I just want to start by saying thank you to the city and the staff. I mean, from city manager with Robbie and Rahim, just the shared vision that you both have had from day one when we started this project that has been at least a couple of years in the works. And then just the diligence with Suzanne on the financing and creativity on the financing. And now that Sean is strapped into the project, I mean, this guy's a rock star, and it's just been a pleasure to work alongside this team, it really is an all-star team. I don't think you're going to find a lot of situations around the country where you have such a strong partnership with a professional baseball team at City, both from the city leadership standpoint and city staff standpoint. So we feel very fortunate to be here, very fortunate to be in this position. And truthfully, if we didn't have such a strong partnership with the city and such a strong history with the city, we wouldn't be this ambitious. For us to take on a project of this magnitude with this type of private financing, you're not going to find a lot of teams around the country that are willing to do this. And the reason we're willing to do this is because we're right here in Hillsborough. We have a great history and a great partnership. When it comes to the goals and vision, I mean, one of the things, you know, you're talking about transient lodging tax a lot. We did do an economic impact analysis, Econ Northwest did it for us, and they're projecting about 22,000 hotel rooms. So this is a tourism driver, there's no doubt about it. And they're definitely underselling the concert piece just because we don't have that plan announced of what we plan to do for concerts yet. But when that becomes announced, that overnight stay is going to explode. The vision, I think Robbie laid it out pretty well. I mean, our vision and the shared vision with the city is to build the best facility we can, one of the best facilities in the country. I've been in professional sports for a while now, I've been around events, live events for a long time now, and the best venues get the best events, it's that simple. And we have a lot of great family events, festivals, concerts, they are skipping Oregon right now. And we have an opportunity, we've done market studies, we've done the market demand, we've done feasibility analysis. We have an opportunity to build a venue where those, where those, where that entertainment opportunity is not skipping Oregon anymore. It's coming right here to Hillsborough. And that's super exciting. I mean, obviously, we're a baseball team, and we're going to have 66 baseball engines, the anchor tenant for this venue, but that's not why we're building this venue. We're building it for the other 300 days of the year, 299 days of the year, that we can use this facility as a gathering place to bring people to celebrate and have fun. One of the lines we heard a while ago is, people, people remember events, they don't remember the venue necessarily. So that's not going to downplay the venue, but that's the importance of events. And there's also a stat, there's starting to be some stats thrown around about post-pandemic. And I think one study was 77% of people said live events have helped their mental health stress post-COVID. We're a being that likes to be together, we like to gather, we like to celebrate together. And venues do that, community venues like this do that. So we're super excited about what this venue can be. So we're super excited about what this venue can be for our region, for our community, and we couldn't be more thrilled that it's right here in Hillsborough. We talked about the the year-round nature of this, the two hundred ninety nine. We talk a lot in our office about the two ninety nine. Those are the days that the HOPs aren't playing. And just what the potential is for those events. But cultural events, we want a home for cultural events. So at the end of walk-in, we hosted the Latino Cultural Festival last year for the first time. It was tremendous. I mean. We need a home for those types of events and to do more of those types of events. If this gets approved and we start to move forward, we'll have an announcement in a couple of weeks for a concert partnership, which is pretty exciting. It will bring anywhere from twelve to twenty concerts, major scale concerts to the region that are not going to Oregon right now. So that's pretty exciting. And many other types of events. I mean, even simple things like just opening it up for family, family movie nights and stuff like that. As far as the financial commitment goes, we have secured, we have. We have a financial team right now with US Bank and Barclays. We have a path to private financing. No issues there. We're finishing up our second feasibility study. They require us to go second one. So that will be done in about three weeks. Right now, the early numbers are supporting all of our assumptions and the previous feasibility study we did, of course. So we're excited to get that wrapped up by early April. And then the other two pieces we need to finalize the financing are the GMP, which you're hearing a lot. And the lease. So once we have those three things, the feasibility study, the GMP and the lease, we'll be able to get that money. And no issues on their end as far as securing this money. The financial team we have with US Bank and Barclays has done projects like this all over the country. They love. Unique projects, you know, they've done a ton of apartment complexes and retail centers and mixed-use developments, but. For them to do a sports stadium, they're pretty pumped about. They're both huge baseball fans too. So they've already become HOPs fans, which is great. So. We've got a great plan. We've put a ton of work into this. This is a critical moment to to put our foot on the gas and get this project done. So thank you for everything that you've done to get to this point. Thank you for the shared vision. And I'll let Mike and Gary close it out on our side.
Thank you, Kail. Hopefully, we've demonstrated over the last decade that the ownership group is committed to. Hillsborough and Washington County. We love being involved in the community and. I'm a baseball fanatic. That's why I'm in this. And my wife is worse. But since we've come here and seen how. Ronald Tocken Field has become truly, my opinion. A gathering place for the community where so many of us can get together and talk about experiences that are different. I can't tell you how much I've learned and how many strange conversations I've had over time. In the ballpark. It's just, it's great. And I'm thinking. I love baseball, but I'm getting more out of this than just that. I'm learning about our community. I mean, a lot of people would know, this is. Getting back to the baseball part. We're. Because we're a HOP school, all minor league baseball, something of an existential crisis going on. But we're looking at this as an opportunity, an opportunity to make the. Community gathering place that we started. Expand on that. To not only have sixty six games a year, hopefully more than that, hopefully getting the playoffs eventually. But have concerts, as Kail mentioned, but. Reimagining how we can use, make partnerships, educational partnerships, cultural partnerships to bring people out to. What is normally a ballpark that is in place to do experiment, doing different things. Or as simple as, hey, it's Tuesday night. We have no games going on. Why not have families come out and play catch? Nothing organized. Just come out and play catch and, oh, I, be a family. If we have a facility that we're in charge of year round and we don't have to. Worry about other things going on that we can schedule ourselves. I'm really excited about what we might be able to do. And. Yes, we're committed. To Hillsborough. We're committed to Washington County. We're not, we're not moving. No matter what. We're going to make this work. Because that's the easiest way for Laura and I to go to baseball games for the rest of our lives. Go upstairs. Anyway. One thing I want to mention is. Affordability. We're going. We're going to have new options for show. In the ballpark, they will have more opportunities, frankly, to spend money. But the one thing we're not going to do. Is jeopardize. The ability of families to come out. This year, you'll be able to go to a Hillsborough HOPs game for an eight dollar ticket. Kail didn't want me to say this, but we're going to commit to that for the next five years. No matter what. That we will have that eight dollar ticket so that. We can create new generations, baseball fans. They can help Laura and I support our habit. Basically, that's my way of saying, we're all in. This is it. We're going to make this work. There's enough. Sounds weird, but there's nothing more important to Laura and I and to our partners. Than to make this work, to guarantee that there's professional baseball. In Hillsborough for generations to come. And to guarantee we have a gathering place where we can have shared experiences and we can all yell and make noise. In a positive way. That'd be kind of weird, wouldn't it? So. We're it. We're all in.
Thank you, Kail and Mike, and we appreciate the HOPs. They're a huge part of our community and we appreciate their partnership. So the last slide, just talking about next steps. Tonight, there's a couple of items on the agenda that have been referenced. Those first two, the interim agreement. Version two and also the amendment to the design build and to the guaranteed maximum price. So we'll see those on the agenda for tonight. And then after that, it's finalizing the financing plan over the next few months with the HOPs. Developing that final agreement, working with, between the HOPs and our staff. Finalizing the loss of use plan with our park staff especially to make sure that we provide those opportunities throughout the community. And then we get to build the thing. So it's, again, we've been working on it for a year and a half, a lot of work to go still. So. Thank you all again for the great work on the presentation tonight and all the work up to this point. We'd be happy to answer any questions for the council.
Thank you, Robbie. And thank you, everybody who presented tonight. So I know Council Martin, Council President Martin is with us online. And so. Council President, if you have any questions, just raise your hand, give us a thumbs up. Amber is watching to see. And while we wait for you, I'll open it up. The other representative of the council, if you have any questions.
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, Councilman, did you have a question?
No, I was just saying thank you for that, but I don't.
Thanks for the briefing tonight. Very much appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. One, when we're talking about moving. Some of the. Tournaments and such in the interim, or maybe even full-time after the stadium is built, should be approved. What is the impact to the Brown Middle School neighborhood? That there's plenty of land, but my concern is neighbors who are right next to a middle school right now. Now have massive tournaments going on in their neighborhood and there isn't really the parking for it. When I think about the parking at Brown and the park across the street, I also think there's space to build parking. So, but have we thought about that is the question.
I can take that one. As Councilor Pace, that's something that's on our radar. You know, it's about a timing thing too, that we may not want to host the evening games in the residential neighborhood. We may go to what Robbie mentioned. Look at opportunities at the fairgrounds for some of those evening games. So there is still work to do around that. Part of the plan, the early plan on Brown would be at our. But that is also a sequencing and timing thing, right? There probably will be a. Part, a timeframe where we won't have anything, but we'll be building. Brown to be able to get that in a year or two. So again, sequencing and timing is a pretty important.
But you've been thinking about it. Yes, yeah, great.
I can add as well, Councilor Pace, so that facility right now, Brown Middle School is used pretty heavily during the summer. I know my kids have gone there to play soccer and. All sorts of sports. So. It's just really formalizing some of those abilities, you know, to hold more games there in different ways. And also. That, as Rahim mentioned, once we get to that point, there is going to be engagement that's involved, you know, we're at the very beginning phases of that. And and we would always want to work with this friendly neighborhood and the school district to try to figure all of this until something.
I was glad to hear about the affordability of the tickets. That's great for a family of four to be able to go see a game. For, what is it, thirty two bucks, right? And then they get a burger, so that brings them up to about a hundred. I really appreciate that commitment because I think that makes a difference to bring a family out and have a great time. In a affordable way. So thanks for that commitment. I did have. Suzanne, I think you covered this, but what is, if this doesn't work. Right? This is military training coming in now from my background. If this doesn't work, what is the risk to the city? The monetary risk.
So the monetary risk to tonight, if you were to approve the agreement this evening. The interim cost allocation agreement, it's an eight point three million dollar agreement. Eighty percent is to be borne by the HOPs. If they agree, it just doesn't move forward. If it does or doesn't move forward. If it doesn't move forward, then they would need to to try to go to their partners to pay back. The twenty, the eighty percent of that eight point three million. We would be on the up for twenty percent of that. Now, the numbers are. Which I don't know, but it's twenty percent of the eight point three million.
I just want to be clear, I just want to.
Yeah. So there is potential risk there. If the project works to not move forward, and that that would be the result of not being able to secure financing.
Okay. And. You talked about the TLT, the transient logic tax. That is the funding, funding that can only be used. To help bring people into the city for entertainment. That is the funding we'll be using. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great.
And I mentioned that that back in nineteen twenty, we brought in around two million dollars. Thirty percent of that will go to general funds. The seventy percent will go towards this project if that was so first.
Great. And then the last question I have has to do with. The cost. There's a big difference there between a hundred and sixty million and a hundred and twenty million. Is the construction cost, is that based on what construction costs now? Or is this pre two thousand twenty?
It's actually escalated when construction will start.
Okay.
So it's over this coming construction season and next construction season.
Great. Thank you for that, Sean. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Councilor Graham Benner. First of all, thanks for the presentation. I'm going to admit that I was an early skeptic, not of this project, but of bringing the HOPs, not the HOPs, but a professional baseball team in town. And the HOPs have proven to me that they are very much committed to Hillsborough. And I have much more confidence now than I did at that time, that it's just a reasonable risk. I would ask the same question as Peach did. I want to know how much risk we're taking early on. Want to know what. Back Susan, you alluded to the fact that this is going to be funded, but we have an upfront cost now of eighteen million, which is much less than the. Combined ten billion plus thirty million dollar commitment earlier. But we don't have that eighteen million remaining around, so we're financing that first. We're financing the eighteen million different, right? Somehow.
If the project moves forward, we would be financing, likely looking to finance our share of the project.
Right.
Now, we wouldn't move forward with financing our share of the project, i.e. selling the bond if the project were not to a man.
Right.
So then if we were armed up for that twenty percent of that eight point three million dollars, we would look to funding on hand to pay our share of that.
Should we still pay that through the TLT?
That would be, but Chad line is, I have feeling that would be a hard, hard. To do since we would have nothing to show from it.
Oh, yeah, that's a hard question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
We have a fiscal responsibility here. Construction costs have been escalating. We're seeing that. The foundations were building, some of the other commitments were making sort of capital improvements. What happens if this comes in at more than one?
If I just take a stab at that, Sean, if you add to it. Design building team have done a really good job of putting into contingencies here, just knowing where the market is right now and where it could be. Frankly, if we were building a stadium five years ago, we wouldn't be talking about a hundred percent, right? So it's. It's something that they're aware of, and that's why it's a hundred and twenty million dollars.
And more than since the same company that built the original stadium, this is a different company. Good company though.
I'd also like to add that in a delivery method like this, we're actually designing to a budget. It's called a target value budget that we're using. So. We're designing based on the funding that we are projecting having available. That changes, we'll have to change the program. Or, you know, make a decision at that point. But we have enough program where we're pretty much still.
Thank you for those assurances and I'm a supporter of this. I just wanted. Make sure everything's out on the table so we all understand what we're doing. And the council. That's what we're at.
Welcome. Thank you. Ed. I am clear on these pieces as far as finances and I, I too also hope that. This happens in a big way because I feel like. We're just tapping into the future potential of having these facilities, just having seen. What we've brought in through community engagement, the opportunities that have been provided for our local small businesses with the different events. And the different theme nights even. And also, as, as I speak to more and more people outside of Hillsborough, they are becoming not just aware of the HOPs, but the different areas and resources that Hillsborough have. So it's almost out of envy that they speak of, you, you live right there. Yeah, I live right there. We just roll over to the ballpark. And so. I feel like we're just starting to turn that corner with different potential that this type of facility can continue to bring to our area.
So I appreciate the presentation tonight and have watched the growth of the HOPs, which has been nice to see. I appreciate the commitment that the HOPs have to Hillsborough and the shared. Shared idea of what this could bring about. Couple of questions that I have have been about costs and Suzanne, you've answered those. And affordability, I appreciate an eight dollar ticket. But I. One of the things that. Would make an additional difference, and it's not possible, but like the, for the Timber's play. They've got the Mac Station right there, and that makes it really accessible for everybody to come to the game and not worry about where they have to park. But we don't have that. And I don't know what the future is for that. But when we don't have that, that cuts down on. Probably the eight dollar ticket folks that don't have that transportation. And so I want to know what, what are we going to do about that? What are we going to do to make getting there accessible? And how easy will that be? Because I think that's something that we have to figure out. If we're talking about people are going to come here to come to a concert. Stay in a hotel, get around towns. As much public transit as we can provide, that will make that way more attractive to people than thinking that they have to go. Get in the car, go park at the stadium, and afterwards go and drive to go someplace to go have. Food or whatever they're going to do and drive to get to their hotel. And we. we're a growing city, but um our roads aren't growing as fast as we're growing. And the potential of what you're um saying tonight is huge. And uh and the visions of, you know, where are we going, which is fun. I think that's good to think that part has, but I'm just worried about the accommodations part, all the logistical stuff, which I'm sure you don't have answers to right now, but I'm raising that because I'd like to see more families be able to go and be able to afford to go and have a good time. Once they get there, will they be able to afford um um refreshments and food and um and to enjoy that baseball experience of that time when I know I had that at Candlestick Park whenever I went when my family took us to go and see all those games makes a difference. So I want you um at some point in the future to kind of address those things. And what's going to happen and what are we going to do about that? And um Brown Middle School is a place, is one place, but again, I'm thinking like um what's the transportation and like, what are the families going to be hit with? And um that's a lot to think about. But I um, I do appreciate the presentation you have and the passion that you have um for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. I don't know. Anybody has a comment you'd like to respond to?
The only thing I want to say is one of our core values is affordability. So like I mentioned, I wasn't thrilled with him making that promise tonight. Um, but we share that value. We have that value. I've worked for them for over twenty years and affordability has always been a key pillar for our organization. That's not ever going away.
Thank you. Councilor St. Michael.
I just want to say thank you uh for a great presentation today. And I also want to say uh to our counselors as a body, these are phenomenal questions. I actually don't have any additional questions because of all the input from our council. Um, I look forward to the next work sessions and the council on care uh convey affordability is a key factor for being equitable in our community. And it is, transportation is another key factor as well as parking. Um, thank you for the great input from everyone. Thank you for the presentation.
And um I don't see Council Martin. Um, so I think I guess I'll back, you know, and I will say, yeah. Thank you for the questions. Most of them have been covered. Um, and you know, I think, um, as I think about being here, you know, two thousand and twelve, when we voted um, you know, to, you know, fund the stadium, build the stadiums and um, you know, what a, what a great partnership it's been. Um, and I say thank you, you know, for the impact that you've had. And it has certainly benefited our community. And uh I am so appreciative of the work that you have done towards equity and honoring the diversity of our community, uh with local authorities, as well as baseball critics that have been helped. One thing I would love to see, because we as a city have committed ourselves to making sure that we um our procurement policy uh supports minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses. And so as the stadium was built, um, you know, it's not just in practice within our city, it's something that we have made a part of. You know, knowing the Espinosa, you know, with our portable housing project, and I would love to see in every way that we can support minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses and veteran-owned businesses. I would love to see them have the opportunity uh to be a part of this project as well. The, the comment about twenty-two thousand hotel rooms, that's over how many years? I mean, I'm hoping it's one, but.
And one.
Nice, nice, very good. Um, and let's see, I think um yeah, I I also very proud that Ron Tom, that the Gordon-Fable Recreation Complex is the home of Portland State University softball. Um, I can say this, you know, we have helped fill meet and greet and we, you know, and to see unique names. Um, so then the P S U softball would be able to use the current baseball field. Is that correct? Uh, as part of, you know, the best use of and kind of relocating, uh, or is that, is that, we're figuring that out?
We're figuring that out right now. So we've been in discussions with uh P S U on what that looks like. Because obviously we, we value our partnership with them. We want to continue it. So um it does open up the ability for on talking fields. So we're working through that.
Very good. And maybe just to clarify as well, we would need to make changes to run talking fields in order for that to happen, right? So that's part of that reimagining, reimagining kind of what we're doing at Ron Tom.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I think one of the things that excites me, you know, with um the HOPs and the city are both forward-thinking and visionary organizations. And I do love the thought of years down the road, eventually, you know, I never thought we'd move up to high A and certainly not this fast. Um, so the thought that this could be a double-A ballpark or something down the road, you know, is also very, very exciting to me. And um so if there's another announcement you want to make, as I said, you should be looking. I'm just joking. Just so anyway, with that, um, thank you, you know, Robbie, any, any other or uh Mike K L, any other last comments you'd like to make? You're welcome to our work session.
Just one, one last comment. Um. Part of our planning all along is that we never be in a situation where we where the commissioner's office would ever want to contract us out. So we're looking at creating a ballpark that fits into any level. And so it's it would be incredibly difficult for the commissioner to eliminate baseball here. And we would have a ballpark that could meet the needs for double-A or triple-A. We just and we would have the additional footprint if we had to do more. So we're, we're trying to prepare for any possibility and uh any opportunity.
Thank you.
There, I can just close really quick. I, I didn't, there's a lot of Marks Recreation staff out there, uh, audience as well. I just wanted to highlight them because Gordon-Fable Recreation Complex is amazing. It's an amazing facility, but it's amazing because of the staff that operated and maintained it. So I just wanted to give them a lot of kudos tonight and say thank you to them because they're instrumental in all of this, all of the plans that we're making. They're the ones that make, make it happen. So, thank you.
And there's no better way to finish a work session than for the applause. So that, the work session is adjourned. We will reconvene in five minutes with our city council. I didn't actually use my line there. All right. So welcome to the March seventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format here at our civic center and via Zoom as well as T V C T V. Um, and they are live streaming in for us. So thank you all for joining us regardless of the format in which um you are with us tonight. So I invite you to join me in uh reciting the pledge of allegiance and then we'll have a roll call. Amber, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Cowley?
Here.
Council Case?
Here.
Council Person Claire? Here. Council Relato? Here. Council Graham Bevins?
Here.
Council Alcier? Here. And just to note that Council Martin is on the line, however he will, and so we'll be training in the voting process.
Our first proclamation tonight is to recognize the one-hundredth anniversary of the Hillsborough Rotary Club. And so I would invite the Hillsborough Rotary Club representatives to come forward. And if you are a member of the Rotary, please stand. You can have a seat. Um, Bill, we will take roll and if you can make that. All right. Whereas the Hillsborough Rotary Club has been a pillar of our community and civic life for one hundred years. And whereas hundreds of Hillsborough men and women, business professionals, have been members of the Rotary Club, giving back to their community and living their motto of service above self. And Rotary's four-way test, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And ever more will it be beneficial to all concerned? And whereas the Hillsborough Rotary Club supports Rotary International in over two hundred countries with one-point-four million members and its numerous mandatory programs, including worldwide access to safe drinking water and electricity, disaster relief, primary education, childhood immunization, and is the leader in the eradication of the COVID epidemic. And whereas the Hillsborough Rotary Club's many contributors to the meeting include organizing Hillsborough's annual Fourth of July Parade, COVID and fire disaster relief for families and businesses, college scholarships, international exchange students, supporting many organizations, such as the Family Best of Center, Old Plate, the Oregon Food Bank, the Boys and Girls Club, Nails on Wheel, the Quality Foundation and Mammography Ban for uninsured women, Open Doors, Hillsborough Family Shelter, and many more worthwhile community service programs and projects. And whereas the city would like to recognize the many contributions over the past century of the Hillsborough Rotary Club to the social and economic growth and well-being of our community. Now therefore, it is resolved that I S G Cal, a mayor of the city of Hillsborough, Oregon, should hereby proclaim March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three as the one-hundredth anniversary of the Hillsborough Rotary Club in Hillsborough and encourage our citizens to convey their appreciation of the Hillsborough Rotary Club for their dedication and strong commitment to the Hillsborough. And introduce yourself.
I'm Judy Welling. Say this loud as I can. I'm Judy Welling and I've been honored to be president this year.
I'm Patrick Robinson and I am honored to be president-elect, president next year of the twenty-three.
So Pat and I are sharing our honeymoon here. I end on June thirtieth. That starts on July one. That's a relief. And, and you know, this really feels fun. I want anyone who's a hundred years old to stand. I want anyone feels like. It has been, we're going to start, I think, by Saturday night, we're having a hundred-year gala at the Moon Band. And we're kicking it off and I'm so excited because we have Rotarians from all over the state of Oregon. We don't just have Hillsborough. And we have a lot of leaders in the city for our country. And um, and we have great sponsors like Intel, you know, we have City of Hillsborough, we have County. We, we have five or six, seven good sponsors this year. Let's go where we want to go. And then we have our Rotary Club members who are giving heart and soul and will all year long make this, not just this year, but next year and next year and next year and all the thousand, a hundred years. Um, and it isn't just about Hillsborough. Rotary is in every city, is in every country. All of the, all of the world, we're international. And everybody says that for a week that. So I'm really, really proud of the Rotarians. And I'm really, really proud to be here and thank our city and this hope we get in our own community to do what we do.
Well said. I'm gonna carry it forward. Here, that's where it is, all of them, Senator.
Thank you. If there's anybody in this room that thinks that Rotary might fit you and you're a member of it, we'd love to have you, because we're growing. You've got this right now. We've grown more in the past year than we have in several. But if Rotary is something you serve as a part of, that you're interested in, come here.
Yeah, and that's where do we come?
Oh, we come to. We meet every Thursday at the Hillsborough House Bar and Club.
On the bottom.
And anyone is welcome. We love it and you'll figure out real quickly whether you want to.
Do you serve lunch?
Yeah, we do. Thank you. We do. We're selling really lovely. And we made a difference. Thank you.
I'm happy to have a number of people who are here for the pro proclamation. But I do want to ask you to say, I'll move into our first presentation, which is with our head professor. Council, it's a, you know, in the lead when I start my part. I wanted to say to all the rest, um. Thank you. And our next proclamation is to honor women's history. Whereas women of every race, class, ethnic background, and historic opportunity to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unreported ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting significant forces for labor. And whereas women have served our country through agency, military, and whereas women have been leaders at the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only in securing their own rights and suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, the environmental movement, other movements which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas women serve as leaders in spaces from their homes to the boardroom, to the office of the vice president of these United States. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently on the look and underlined in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, it is resolved that I S G Cal, a mayor of the state of Hillsborough, Oregon, should hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-three Women's History Month. In Hillsborough, and I urge all beauty members to celebrate women and their impact on history and on society. And I cannot pass up the opportunity of talking about women uh breaking down walls and busting through barriers. And this year, Hillsborough HOPs will have a woman manager and Ronnie is the highest level. So she'll be the first woman mayor at, I'm sorry. And, and I, which is the highest level of baseball, uh professional baseball that there's ever been in a woman. So we are so excited to have Ronnie in that role. And so um the whole of that is the only man. And so she currently has it. Yes. And so after you're done at the Rotary, then come back. Howard, I would like to invite Eddie Booth.
Who?
I'm not gonna mess up. Eddie, come on in. And Eddie is here to receive our Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month proclamation. Thank you for being here. Eddie is a graduate of our Civic Leadership Academy and is now on our planet. So thank you for joining us. Whereas upon nationwide, approximately 6 million people have developmental disabilities. And whereas at least 66,213 adults and children in Oregon have developmental disabilities. And whereas Oregonians with and without disabilities live and work and prosper in the form of strong diverse communities. And whereas regardless of ability, every person has valuable strengths, infinite capacity to learn, and the potential to make important contributions that are looked at in this state. And whereas people with developmental disabilities share their vision to the good, meaningful lives with over 4 million residents in the state of Oregon. And whereas families of people with developmental disabilities deserve recognition for their commitment to helping their family members achieve that vision for their good life as an independent and contributing member of the community. And whereas Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is an appropriate time to recognize Oregon's public policy accomplishments on behalf of people with disabilities and to also identify improvements of public policy that are needed to fully include all of Oregon's residents with developmental disabilities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Steve Cowley, Mayor of the City of Hillsborough, Oregon, could hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 to be Developmental Disabilities Month Awareness Month in Hillsborough, and encourage all citizens to join in this group.
Is the building for next month? Because I can advocate that around this table with people with intellectual disabilities. And that I can be around the, like, talk to my representatives, talk to the, our listening members. Talk to my federal level representatives to make things happen in the state of Oregon. And there's a marriage penalty law. And because two people with developmental disabilities and intellectual disabilities, this is at the federal level. We're trying to get that changed. The couples that are disabled and have developmental disabilities, can we will get married? There's a penalty right now. If you guys advocate to help, it is to change. It has to go from the federal level to interchange. Because it takes two people to earn income. And they can have your income away that is legal to get married. So that's the hardest part, because we have to have commitment ceremonies. And that it's not a regular wedding, you just commit to one another by doing vows and that. We're not legally married, we're committed to one another. It is, it is a, it, I just advocate for, I advocate daily, on a daily basis. And it is awesome to advocate for people that have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And if you see, if you see somebody, say hi to them, or people too. We want to be recognized in the community as you guys. And I have, and I'm not working on some developmental disabilities. And I advocate for people that don't speak up and don't have voice. So I would encourage you to often say hi to people with disabilities and help them out.
If you don't have the look bar to find Eddie, you're gonna say hi. You're gonna see him at our market on Saturday. You will see him upstairs in the fifth floor, you know, coming by to talk to me. So you'll win, and I will tell you, your highs to us mean as much as our highs do to you. And so thank you for sharing that, especially about, and you know, if I talk about the property, another need to change so that there's full integration and participation. So what you shared with us today helps me understand the policy that you're giving to the community. Thank you for joining us. And our last proclamation tonight is that on the 30th anniversary of the Muslim Educational Trust, I would like to invite my good friend, Dr. Wadi Saif, who is the Director of the Non-Educational Trust. Whereas the Muslim Educational Trust, MET, is a cultural, social, and educational institution founded in 1993 with a mission to enrich the public's understanding of Islam and dispel hominids and stereotypes while serving the Muslim community's educational, social, and spiritual needs. And whereas MET has been serving our community for 30 years, enhancing the quality of life of the Muslim community and building connections between the numerous diverse communities of our region. And whereas MET is a pillar of the community as an institution that seeks faith-driven solutions for the challenges we today and works to make our community more understanding, compassionate, love, and unity. And whereas the city would like to recognize the inspiring leadership of MET, past and present. And whereas MET's deep and holistic educational experience, it is to optimize its long-term as well as its weak-end skill, continues the advancement of education and leadership skills for all Oregon Muslim communities. And whereas the city wishes MET another 30 years of continued excellence there. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Steve Cowley, Mayor of the City of Hillsborough, Oregon, could hereby proclaim Saturday, March 11, 2023, as the 30th anniversary of the Muslim Educational Trust. And I in Hillsborough encourage our citizens to convey their appreciation of MET, but their dedication to the community.
I respect my mayor and respected leadership, City Council, and City Manager, and my brothers and sisters, the audience here, the brothers. It's really a blessing, you know, to be a citizen of the United States. I became a citizen of the United States by choice and allegiance. I came as a female leader. And I choose to become part of the solution, part of the healing, and, and in my part of this square. MET, the Muslim Education Park, for the many minds, for minds, many ladies, one of them was working for the city, doesn't program any. And many other gentlemen. I was mentored by one of the greatest, you know, urban planner. He was the founding leader of the Republican Party, the late Al-Fulham. He put Portland State in the map, you know, and Portland State wasn't even acknowledged, you know, as a good college yet. Another great contributor to our progress square is the late Governor Rattia. He was an Arab-American, part of the American, he was a Republican, he was a good Republican. And the feature today is that he needs to be part of the solution. You know, when I see the diversity of this beloved sisters and brothers here, you know, America is beautiful from within. When I go to my little man, German, you know, I said, America is beautiful from within. Because most of our immigrant ancestors, we come from this mental societies that are victims of our foreign policy. Our foreign policy is a bad one. And the public see it that way. The genocide, you know, the indigenous, the slavery of the African. Well, African didn't come here, you know, and also the Latino community. The border, you know, didn't move, the border changed. And it is very important for us today as citizens, you know, as residents, as responsible, loved individuals able to address these bigger issues. And we cannot do it unless we part with ourselves. I remember my mother used to tell me, before you point, you cross your finger, remember there are three fingers pointing to thirty. We have to heal ourselves as individuals to be able to heal everybody in the public square. We might disagree, but I would say neither should the reason for us to be divided. Today, you know, many challenges facing us in the United States. Many people are left behind, some of them, the system that is behind, and some of them by choice. You know, but it is very important for the executive officers, for community leaders, is to integrate by design. Integrate the services by design, to make sure that we reach out to those that are left behind. The gentleman that spoke earlier, you know. It is very important that we become the love is community. It started many programs that were some education past, other than the Arab, which was in Iraq. In the golden age of Islam, you wish efficient, live and practice together. It was cities of light in the Spanish, in Islam, the Moorish civilization, the Utsia. It was for 700 years that Muslims integrated. And if it wasn't that Islamic golden age, we didn't have the European Renaissance. Cities of light, integrated, where Jews and Christians and Muslims and other people of good will live their practices together. You know, African of Africa, in Asia, this name, the central 700 years, 100 years of central of faith, of faith, of many, many reasons for loving and dearly responsible way. So it is very important for us, my beloved mayor and City Council, and City Leaders here, is to claim the narrative of love. We have to choose love and respect to be able to be ourselves and in a society that we believe in. Or reform the system, not dismantle the system, improve the system. So we can claim that love is community, that love is community that starts with each, that starts with each one of us. Thank you very much, Mayor.
And so, you know, this, when I see you as a community, you know, there are so much that makes up, and so much that contributes to our community. And one of our work, our two members. And so we're grateful to have our Metro Councillor for our history here tonight. And so I'm gonna invite him to come on up, and as I move, as I go back to my seat, and I appreciate, we have all of you saying with his present day because. You know, it is pretty important that we all understand, you know, how little, you know, it's like we're partners that city gives us because we are stronger together, and we're stronger because of our partnership and mutual. And we are, and that's not my, but it's probably for the, for the, so they're gonna clap. Paul, yeah, Karen Rosenbaum, who's also a Metro Councillor, and has a bit of Hillsborough down in the south, is gonna be presenting as well. So I just can introduce you a second so we can have more applause.
At the corner of Hillsborough that I represent, because it's part of the southeast corner.
Excellent. Well, good evening, and happy to usher in the work session presentation today. Mayor and Member of the Council, when I started this, good evening, incredibly moved by the proclamations and by your leadership in prioritizing diversity equity inclusion. And it's just, it's so beautiful to see Hillsborough celebrated. I'm happy to be joined by Councillor Garrett Rosenbaum, represents the south half of Washington County. And as was mentioned, my name is Juan Carlos, I represent north and northwest Washington County on the regional government. And we're here to make a presentation on the TV Highway Transit Project that is underway in the county. And I appreciate the city for sharing the presentation on the screen. And we'll just get, get into it. I do want to thank the council for considering the submission of a letter to the council later on the agenda as well, providing your feedback and support for the high-capacity transit updates to the RTP. In reviewing the letter, Councillor Rosenbaum and I appreciate the comments which prioritize critical of the corridors like TV Highway and many others that are on the document that you will soon be sending us. Although the effort of the Steering Committee is focused on transit service and access along TV Highway, we have the opportunity to make this project that we'll be presenting on today a landmark for our region, a landmark for our county, and really the next chapter of urban mobility and really the vision of having a significant investment in transformation. You know, what I see is the backbone of our region on TV Highway. So YTB Highway, Line 57, which is the bus service line that is on TV Highway, has the highest ridership of any bus line in Washington County. It also saw a less drop-off in ridership during COVID than any other in the region. So it retained its ridership even as behavior or travel patterns changed. And I think we all recognize how critical that corridor is for our communities. We, we also know from experience and from what we've, what we've seen on the corridor, that it is one of the highest crash corridors in the region, especially dangerous for people walking, many of whom need access to transit, often resulting in fatalities. We're also focused here because nearly all of TV Highway falls into metros, equity-focused areas with significantly higher percentages of people of color and low-income residents living alongside the corridor. So Councillor Rosenbaum and I are excited to share some updates, and I'll pass it off to Councillor Rosenbaum to, and next slide please.
Next, yeah, next slide, please. That map is a little small to see, but it is the, it's transportation and metro, that's really the 2040 growth concept, showing communities, the blue areas are industrial or employment areas around the area. The dark red areas are urban centers or regional centers. And the, the yellow, the green areas are the rural reserves. Beyond that, you probably can't look at that map and get too much from this distance. But anyway, I just want to, we want, what we want to point out is that transportation is one of the key elements of the coordination of the transportation, because there's lots of funding, there's lots of different parts of transportation programs. There's local, there's state, there's the federal funding and so forth. But a lot of that is guided by the 2040 growth concept, which is also underway and also under a change. It's going to be, as you know, the, the whole area is changing rather dramatically in many ways. It's changed a lot. We have different work habits, we have different kinds of situations. And so that is being an upgraded 2040 growth plan that's been a guide that's going forward. And part of that is the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan. And as you know, the ODA has put in the, the TV Highway upgrade, basically the transit upgrade as one of their constrained list projects for the, for the RTP, which means that it's available for funding. So this is one of, this is the thing we want to emphasize. And we've been soliciting, as you know, we've been soliciting input on the RTP projects. And Hillsborough and every, all the other cities have their, their RTP projects would have been. This is one, a critical one that we think is important to create a better transportation, a more equitable transportation system out here, and it's a very critical corridor with a very critical bus line. I'll go on to the next slide, and Councillor Gonzalez will take it from there.
Councillor, so again, another slide with some famously small text. So apologize for that, but this, this study and this project really consists of two parts. The first is the transit study, which I'm gonna spend some time talking about. And then the equitable and balanced strategy, which will be the tail end of the presentation. So the transit study work is anchored by members of our Steering Committee, which is made up of the jurisdictional partners that intersect with the corridors, that's the county, ODA, TRIMET, as well as local community leaders, advocates, and elected officials from jurisdictions along the corridor. And of course, I have to appreciate all the time that Councillor Van Beveren commits to representing the City of Hillsborough on the committee and offering some invaluable feedback and perspective, and someone that knows the corridor well, and all the, and all the decades. And someone that knows the corridor well, and all the, and all the decades of plans and studies that we've done on this, on this corridor. And you know, really, the, the reason that I call this project transformative is because now we're aware that the Biden administration worked with Congress to create the bipartisan infrastructure law. And within this, within this package of investment, there were all kinds of capital grant programs, which some are for cities, some are for NPOs, the metros, some are for DOTs, Departments of Transportation. Um, and we really feel because of some of the indicators that I mentioned earlier, that TV Highway and others like eighty-second Avenue in Baltimore County, the city of Portland, our projects are, are candidates to be incredibly competitive with the goals that the administration has set. And so all of us, all of us at the steering committee are meeting together to really work together across boundaries and to find ways of how our different unique needs along the corridor. We know that it's a long corridor, it's over seventeen miles. Um, and throughout different iterations of TV Highway, communities experience different needs. So the steering committee has been meeting for a few months now, focusing on the planning, design stage with the end goal of coming up with an agree, with an agreed upon locally preferred alternative, an LPA, which is a document that identifies the mode, just bus, and alignment where the bus service will be and how it will run, as well as the general location of bus stations. Uh, once approved by the steering committee, the LPA will then go through a series of reviews and approvals, including this council before heading to JPA and Metro Council for inclusion in the regional transportation plan. And the graph up there kind of shows you generally our ambitious timeline of getting an LPA done by late summer. Uh, so that we're able to, again, be really competitive as the first series of brands are rolled out by the federal transit administration. Next slide, please. Uh, early in the process, partners on the committee identified the following goals for the study. We use these goals to guide all the project decisions from the big picture down to the design details. Uh, we want to see much faster bus service that's competitive, if not more competitive than driving. We want transit to be an efficient mode for those who already use it and attractive to those, for those who don't. And we also want to accrue people's experiences at the bus stops and provide ease of access and safety enhancements, lighting, crossings, you name it. So I'm going to pass it off to Councilor Rosenbaum to cover some of the examples of what we're envisioning and, and a little bit more.
Thank you, Councilor Gonzalez. Next slide, please. As you know, this, this corridor has changed over the years. I've been here long enough to know that when it was primarily a farm to center city kind of core, uh, core role. And now it's really people are competing all along and the fact that a lot more short visits and short trips that are people going to places of employment, the employment sector out here has grown rather dramatically. Thirty, forty years ago, um, I can go back even further than that. It was primarily Portland was the center where everybody was going to from farms, the small villages. So anyway, we're looking at a lot of different things and as you recognize, because it's a, it's a long corridor, as Councilor Gonzalez said, it's over sixteen miles. It also goes through a number of jurisdictions and each of the jurisdictions is somewhat different. They have their own demographics, their own population, their own needs, their own commercial activities. Uh, it starts in Forest Grove, goes through Cornelius, goes through Hillsborough, goes through Aloha, and then goes into Beaverton. So they all are different, but we're looking at the various kinds of things, the kinds of station shelters. Shelters are probably fairly critical of this, lighting and, um, lighting and speeding elevated platforms. One of the reasons for elevated platforms is because it makes it easier and quicker for people to get on the bus and also much better for people with disabilities to get on the bus. You have platforms with ramps, they can just roll right on. This saves a lot of time. If you can save, and I think it's like fifty-seven stops. If you can save fifteen, twenty seconds at each stop, you can substantially improve the, the travel time for, for people getting there. It makes it a lot more competitive. So transit priority, that's transit signals that are prioritized so that the transit can go through. It doesn't have to wait at the lights, in lane stops, there's a, it's a complex issue with in lane stops and offlane stops. It depends a little bit on where you are on the road and the, and the speed. Um, there is a preference for in lane stops because there is, you don't have to merge time, but you can't do that at high speeds. So that has to be studied for each of the areas and it's different. It depends on a, there, there's some stretches that are forty-five in the Aloha area, example. Safer station access that we all know, particularly in areas outside of Hillsborough, in the, in the rural areas, there's some access points that are very difficult. And so we're going to be looking at ways in which that can be improved. I've seen some places where there's trails crossing the railroad tracks and they're just muddy and they're just really not very safe. And there is an added lighting, optimized stop spacing. There may be some of the stops that are redundant or are, don't capture the, the people that need to use the bus. So there's going to be a lot of studies of that. And then the fleet of new buses. And this is a complicated issue. It would be nice to have electric buses, but as you know, this is a long run. And electric buses have a limited distance capacity. Currently it's around three hundred kilometers, which is about a hundred eighty miles. So it means you could run it for seven or eight runs and then you'd have to recharge them. So there's a lot of complications in picking up the buses, whether they're going to be articulated large buses, whether there's going to be different buses at different times, whether there's going to be express service. So there's a lot of complications there. Uh, as you know, electric buses would be desirable and reduce contamination, I should say, air pollution in the urban area, but may not be practical in many regards. So there's a lot of things that go into this. The staff has been doing a lot of work in the last month or so, evaluating all these technical options. And that's why we think we have a handle on moving this forward through the summer and getting an LPA within the fall term. Next slide, and Councilor Gonzalez.
Thanks, Councilor. So I, I realize that I missed an important detail earlier. So the, the Small Starts Program, which you, you know, but also for, to, to help inform the public that is listening in today, has a ceiling of, of four hundred billion dollars as a, as a capital project. And so, I mean, that's, that's, that's not, that's not nothing, you know? Uh, that's, that's a really important amount of investment that we can secure for this corridor. Um, and I just want to get into a little bit about some of the challenges that I think are universal. I think we understand, but still wanted to acknowledge. Um, first is that there's limited space and we have a lot of users. This is an important regional freight corridor that moves goods. Uh, we have people walking, rolling, biking, buses, and of course, uh, uh, a corridor that people use with their private vehicles to get to all, all kinds of places, to play, to worship, to be with family and friends. Uh, we know that there's a, a just adjacent railroad, uh, and also businesses and different, uh, bill, uh, items of the built environment that can make it complicated. Uh, and specifically, although the corridor is over seventeen miles, what we're studying right now is the sixteen, sixteen point six miles that take a project from the Beavers and Transit Center to the Forest Grove Transit Center. Uh, and we're really looking through all the details of downtowns, through some of the more suburban areas, uh, and trying to understand more of what makes these costs high and the design complicated. Uh, the federal funding rules dictate initial project size in terms of the dollars. So we're really working creatively to work within the rules and the cap that we have in designing that. Uh, but with all of this, you know, I'm really confident that we can find a way to design the project because the community has spoken to us for decades about why this project is important and we need to deliver it with this opportunity of funding at the federal level. Next slide. So another very important part of this work is, uh, the equitable development strategy that we've worked on. This effort is fully community led with Metro in support by Unite Oregon, which is an organization that does organizing and community leadership work in the Portland metro area and throughout Oregon. We've also partnered with several community based organizations plus individual local leaders who comprise our TV Highway Equity Coalition. The coalition is tasked with working to prevent displacement of residents and businesses as a result of the increased land value that would result from this significant transportation investment. The coalition is identifying strategies related to formal housing, education, prosperity, among other topics. And the next public workshop for this effort is on Saturday online on March eleventh. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm going to close down. Uh, and really, um, uh, you work very hard and I know that you get regular updates on this project. But as co-chairs, counselor of this, of this steering committee, Councilor Rosenbaum really, and I wanted to just spend some time with you and just really communicate, one, the timeline of this project, how important it is and why it's so critical to us at Metro, to the communities that we represent, that we are tracking this project, that we are asking good questions and that, um, we're really invested in this study to, to come out with the, with the best final recommendation. So that being said, we've all many questions and concerns, um, any aspirations that you have? Uh, and if the questions get too hard, then thankfully I have Jess, who's a dad here, who's the planning lead at Metro for this project and again, thank you so much for having us.
Just, I have a few, um, questions. It's very, it's a very lovely, sure. Um, and including going through Tenth Avenue, which we're looking to change. And so I'm guessing that that's going to be really complex, um, as we get through that. I, um, I'm happy about that this has become a priority. Um, how much of the state is providing support to Metro for this project?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Councilor. Thank you so much for the question. So the, for the first half of your question, you got the S on the Penn Street. Uh, I know that our staff are, are working closely, as I mean, as much as is known about all the changes. You know, there's still a lot of work to do there, but you know, those are the kind of alignments that we would be working towards. Uh, this project has been, we've been able to get to this phase of, of the committee thanks to, uh, some grants. Um, we haven't necessarily secured a huge amount of support from the state yet, but we're also not at that stage yet. Uh, we are in the early planning phase and, you know, just like most projects that are zero to five percent, ten percent, thirty percent design, construction build, there will be opportunities in the future for all of our cities and our counties with RTP lists or constraint lists, uh, to contribute to, towards a project. And I mean, we definitely think that ODOT as, as the owner of most of the corridor to step up in a really significant way. And we're grateful that they're at the table and that they're prioritizing this. And, and hearing through all of our different regional transportation boards and committees that urban materials like TV Highway are just a paramount importance for the future of our region. So I hope, I hope that's a helpful answer.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just add, I know that is an active and enthusiastic partner at this stage. They have to come up with the money that we might want them to, that have got to the asking stage, yeah, for that. But, but the planning stage, they did very supportive.
Well, I should probably say something. I know we have a whole still evaluating our options and I'm, I'm pretty certain pretty contrary, within all the, I've never been to Metro, TRIMET, ODOT jurisdictions. I'm all for the enjoy and just to see what we can do with the best of our, uh, contribution to the project. And hopefully, with the best possible.
A couple of questions here, curious and curious. For how many stops did you say again, can you repeat how many stops are on the TV Highway? Or?
I would love to, I would love to invite our, our technical expert, Jess.
They should know the answer to that question off the top of my head. It's over a hundred now. Remember the exact number. Sorry, it's around, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty. So, and then how far apart are those roughly? It varies widely. Uh, the spacing, say within, we were in Cornelius last night at their city council. I mean, they've got a couple of stops that are two blocks apart from one another. Right now they've got stops at tenth, twelfth, fourteenth. Uh, but then you get out to other parts of the corridor where they're as far apart as, I'd say, up to a third to a half mile right now. Um, and for a project like this, what our goal would be is to have stops on average around a third of a mile apart from one another. It becomes challenging with the roadway network designed the way it is today, where most of your streets are at a half mile or a quarter mile. So it'll vary along the corridor, but that's kind of what our goal would be, to help the operations of the bus.
Can move multiple for our community. Um, I'm excited about this project, but it is one of the key priorities, creating station shelters and, and platforms, and as well, I love that you mentioned that, because currently there's definitely missing for our community, uh, not having covered shelters, not having safe um, space for people who are community with numerous children, like people with disabilities. Um, and quite frankly, it's discouraging to see our community not have that dignity when they're using public transportation. So I'm excited to see improvements and that are serving our community.
That's just clear, Council. Thank you for your questions and your comments. Um, yeah, we completely agree. And, uh, you know, those are, those are some of the really important things for this project that, you know, we feel like should be the baseline of what this corridor should already be. And I mean, when you think of a corridor that's sixteen miles long or at least the area that we'll be working on, you know, four hundred million dollars is a lot of money, but you're, we're spreading it over a very long corridor. And, you know, the fun fact, I guess you could say is that, you know, when we do submit this LPA to the federal transit administration, locally, they're all turned it, I'm trying really hard not to use target. It's harder for the transportation, but, um, it will probably be the longest corridor in its class, um, across the country. Um, it, so I, I mean, that presents its own set of challenges. You're spreading resources across a, a longer corridor. Um, but we're going to do the best that we can with, with the investments to, to make those improvements where they're going to make it really good.
Thank you for the presentation and I'm very much looking forward to the growth of the, as this develops and, and learning more to feature presentations. So thank you.
Um, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate you being here. I do have a, a question about eastbound, um, said eastbound, yeah, eastbound on TV Highway. Are you, are we looking at bus pullouts? We've discussed this before on Transportation Committee. But if the bus doesn't pull out, um, it stops up traffic, but then we have the rail line that we're fighting, that's as well, that we're collaborating with as well. And I was wondering if, um, if that's too, too early to be asking that question. But as far as safety on TV Highway, the speed limit is low. Post-it low, but if people take that highway at rather high speeds and without that bus being able to pull out, that could cause some serious issues for longer distances between stops. So I was wondering if that had been looked at or solved yet. Thanks, Councilor.
Excellent, Councilor. Yeah, if this is being looked at, I'll shake it, since it's a southern half, which TV Highway is sort of my district. And, and you're right, negotiating the railroad is very jealous of its right of way and its right of way is very close to the highway. So I think, and our, Jessica can answer this if she wants. It, it, it varies with particular location and with the particular stop. Some places you're already approaching on the right of way, some places that's not the case. Some places it may be possible, other places it's not going to be possible.
We haven't solved it all yet. I think it's the short answer, but the longer answer is we're part of this is collaboration and working with ODOT and figuring out how our project that is a little bit outside of the way that they normally operate and do their process and a little bit outside of the rules that they have. So we're working with them really closely and really well, I think, to figure out how to work the process, especially regarding questions about pullouts and speed. Um, there will probably still be some pullout stations in the corridor. There will be some inland stops and we don't know where each of those types will be yet. Um, pullouts do provide some advantages in some places that, and, um, they can be paired with other treatments to help speed up the bus, especially at intersections. Um, so we would keep those, um, locations, but we haven't made decisions yet about where exactly we'll have each type along.
Great, thank you very much.
Oh, and I would just say, I'm really glad to see the attention and focus on this quarter. You know, we have a You know, we have a commitment, you know, Hillsborough is in zero. And we know that this is a high risk quarter, especially for pedestrians. And we know that it is disproportionately impacting, you know, people of color and low income. And so I am glad that this is a priority for us because where our budget is focused, so is part of our minds. And so I'm glad for the partners, you know, that we have in this. And, you know, $400 million is a lot of money. But, you know, when I think of the life-changing injuries or the life-ending, you know, crashes, you know, it is a small percentage. So thank you for that. And thank you for making me.
Appreciate it very much. Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for having us. So we appreciate it. Just want to show that we're committed and we know all cities are committed to try to make this project work. Improve safety. Very good. And thanks for your encouragement to get most of the people to stay with. Really appreciate it.
So we'll now move on to public comment and people listening to speak at this hour will be recognized. We have one individual who has signed up to speak, and none on the line. So we have three minutes per person and it's an opportunity for council, but not an opportunity to engage in dialogue. So guess who's the only person? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mark. From the Metropolitano Land Group. And you're going to be speaking to Agenda Item 7.6, the Code Amendment 003-22.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, Mark, the Metropolitan Land Group. And since I may not have an opportunity to speak later during your deliberation, wanted to just raise a point and reiterate a point that we had raised with Plan Commission back on the 8th of February regarding this item. And that the matter is around a very technical, technical sense of the vesting of trips. It's all laid out in our letter that I had circulated to the City Council a couple of weeks ago prior to the first reading. And the request here is that although there is a memo by staff that identifies the trip vesting intent for Wichita Village South, we would like it to be referred to in the code itself. So we respectfully request as part of the motion for the Wichita Village South Code Amendments that the City Council consider that language that is included in that, in that letter from Metropolitan Land Group and actually prefer the trip vesting memo in the code itself. I've been working with Colin. We weren't able to get quite to where we thought we could in terms of the MOU or a letter of interest that would memorialize that in a little more solid form. So I wanted to reiterate the request that we made of the Planning Commission to actually go ahead and put that in the record in code itself when you adopt the code later this evening. Presumably when you adopt the code this evening.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. Next is our considered agenda and these items are normally considered as a motion. Any item may be removed or separate consideration upon request by a member of council. Is there any requests for removing any items? And seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve.
So moved to this.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Any opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Move on to public hearings. 5.1 is Annexation 010-22, aligned data centers. The ordinances will be considered as item 7.1. Our public hearing is also for Zone Change 001-22, aligned data centers. The ordinances for this will be considered as item 7.2. So I'll open the public hearing on item 5.1 and 5.2 and ask any members of council if they need to declare an ex parte contact. And seeing that, I invite planning staff to go forward for their staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council and Speaker Andrew. I'm Leslie Hamilton, but Senior Planner of Planning Services. The item for you tonight is Annexation and Zone Change. Before I get into that, I do want to read the ORS Statute of Chapter 27 at the commencement of a hearing, ORS 197793, where the statement be made to those tenants. That lists the applicable substantive approval criteria, criteria in this case are found in Metro Code 3.09 and Community Development Code 12.8010E from the, for the annexation and for the zone change. Community Development Code in Section 1280168. Evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive approval criteria or other criteria or land use regulations which are used to apply to the decision. Evidence related to the specific approval criteria must be accompanied by specific standards, source of evidence sufficient to report the council on parties' opportunity to respond to each criterion or issue. Failure, failure, to raise an issue of the final evidence you're hearing or by closing record, it's first or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence supporting the decision makers and the parties' opportunity to respond to issue, precludes appeals in the Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, ORS 197796 requires that the statement be made to the applicant that failure of applicant to raise constitutional or other issues or that is proposed conditions of approval, the specific specificity to allow local government or its designated need to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Lastly, the public may ask questions regarding or challenging declarations made by the elected or appointed officials during the testimony process. As none of the items are for you tonight, Annexation and Zone Change, you receive two statutory statements dated March 7. One posted last week and then one issued earlier today because we did have additional public testimony. The annexation is file number 02022 and Zone Change 01122 for the aligned data center site. This is the applicant requested annexation of concurrent city-initiated zone change request for one property and right of way to about two acres located on the east side, Sewell Avenue, Zone on annexation of the IS Industrial Sanctuary. Utilities are available north to our northeast Evergreen Road and will be brought up or at least 30, 30,000 to serve the site. You can find the tax map as an attachment to the draft annexation ordinance. One comment was received on the annexation of Zone Change request this afternoon by Mark Acov. The concerns raised by Mr. Acov primarily relate to how the jurisdictional change will affect his properties, which are tax lots 200, which are beside directly to the north, tax lot 500, which are beside along his northwest corner and brief summary of the concerns and responses. Mr. Acov asks if there is a point at which he will be forced to annex to the city, specifically as annexations continue to come around. Annexations are applicable initiated and are usually a result of either a fee of inception system or desire to develop property. State does not require annexations based on how much of a property is surrounded by town. Mr. Acov also asks whether the annexation will result in easements or water lines on his properties as described in the findings, tax lot 400. We developed in conjunction with tax lot 300 directly to the east and utilities will be provided in extension of our establishment. Mr. Acov also asks whether the annexation will result in a new road to tax lot 200 or between tax lots 200 and 500. Again, as noted in the findings, primary vehicular access to the site will be provided by northeast Avenue. Northeast 30th Avenue, emergency access will be provided to northeast Sewell Avenue on an existing flat hole on tax lot 400, the lot that's being annexed. And last, Mr. Acov asks whether the annexation will result in new restrictions on activities or storage on his lots. The annexation will not affect uses on his site that are compliant with Washington County zoning and building regulations. No city standards, a person will be applying his properties as long as they stay in the county. This concludes the statutory part and then happy to answer questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Then is there no questions? Thank you. Is there any testimony from the applicant? And is there any testimony in favor or opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'm assuming there is no need for irresponsible rebuttal by the applicant. So and based on the lack of testimony, no follow-up questions for staff from council. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to Agenda Item 5.3, which is Annexation 009-22, the Civil Northwest Land Company. And these ordinances will be considered as item 7.3. And item 4, Zone Change 010-22, Civil Northwest Land Company. The ordinances will be considered as item 7.4. I will open the public hearing on items 5.3 and 5.4 and ask if any members of council may declare any ex parte contacts. I see none. I'd like to invite planning staff to oppose, give, agree, or staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The right of mine is Colin, the managing director. And prior to our short staff report, I am going to ask my assistants here to read the ORS video. Is there a lot cuter than I have?
Evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive approval criteria or other criteria or land use regulations which a person believes to apply to the decision. Evidence related to a specific approval criteria must be accompanied by specific statements or evidence sufficient to afford the reviewing body and the parties an opportunity to respond to each criterion or issue.
Failure to raise an issue at the final evidence you're hearing or by the close of the record, in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, ORS 197.796 requires that a statement be made to the applicant that the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated need to respond to that issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Lastly, the public may ask questions regarding or challenge any declarations made by the elected or appointed officials during the testimony portion of the hearing process.
My apologies for the quiet video there.
That's okay. Just to be clear, while that's a good-looking group, they are not as cute as the people who do it on the other video. I'm just, I'm just saying.
And they are either, my individual staff, it's very cute. Another video with that, maybe with children, we're all children, staff members. That video, we haven't put the Spanish subtitles on, so we're trying to make sure that it's this message that's accessible as possible to the staff as possible. And let me get it back to our formality here, which is to say that I need to also remind both the council and those who are listening this evening that the specific approval criteria or the annexation zone change that you're considering this public hearing is Annexation Metro Code Chapter 3.09 and Hillsborough Community Development Code Section 12.80.010E. And the zone change approval criteria found in Community Development Code Section 12.0.160E. The annexation before the council on this particular land use case this evening by municipal land development is for 6.58 acres. They are located in South Hillsborough Plain District. They are proposed to be annexed into the city, into the Clean Water Services District. And it would be removed from the Talboton Valley Fire and Rescue Service District to facilitate future residential development in South Hillsborough. I want to note that this district would not be removed from the Talboton Soil and Water Conservation District. The proposed zone change would move this from the Washington County Future Development 20 to a proposed MR1 multi-dwelling zones, a little bit more dense zone. And we would also be applying a regulatory overlay because a portion of this has with that, that concludes my staff presentation. Thank you. Available questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Very good. Seeing none. Is there any testimony from the applicant? Or any testimony in favor or opposition? Seeing none, I'm assuming there are no follow-up questions for staff. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We will move on to our next public hearing, Development Services miscellaneous files 002-23, utility undergrounding fee in lieu. Consider a recommendation from staff to approve a resolution updating the existing land use application be scheduled to include the fees in lieu of undergrounding utilities. Resolution number 2801 is available and I'll open the public hearing on item 5.5. Is there anyone wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have from council a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2801?
So moved to this.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And maybe we have a roll call. And Amber, while we have Council President Mark with us, he is not voting.
Councillor Sinclair?
Hi.
Here. Alcare?
Hi.
Case?
Hi.
Ruletto?
I.
Go better.
Hi.
Thank you. Resolution Number 2801 is adopted. Moving on to ordinances and first readings. 7.1 Annexation 010-22, aligned data centers. Consider approving an annexation of one parcel of land approximately 3.2 acres in size into the city limits of Hillsborough for future industrial development. Ordinance number 6442 is available. We'll have a motion and a second to go through the first reading of ordinance number 6442.
So moved to this.
Second, I remember. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And maybe we have a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Hi.
Alcare?
Hi.
Case?
Hi.
Ruletto?
I.
Go better.
Hi.
Thank you. First reading of ordinance number 6442 passes. Second reading and consideration of final adoption of the ordinance will be March 21st. Agenda Item 7.2, Zone Change 011-22, aligned data centers. Consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve an ordinance for a zone change from County FD-20, Future Development 20 to City IS Industrial Sanctuary on an approximately 3.2 acre parcel of land that is being annexed at the city limits. Ordinance number 6443 is available. We'll have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance number 6443.
So moved to this.
Second, I remember. Is there any discussion? There's maybe a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Hi.
Alcare?
Hi.
Case?
Hi.
Ruletto?
I.
Go better.
Thank you. The first reading of ordinance 6443 passes. The second reading and consideration of final adoption of the ordinance will be March 21st. Item 7.3 Annexation 009-22, Pacific Northwest Land Company. Annexation of one parcel approximately 6.58 acres in size into the city limits of Hillsborough for future residential development. Ordinance number 6444 is available. We'll have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance number 6444.
So moved to this.
Second, I remember. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Maybe a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Hi.
Alcare?
Hi.
Case?
Hi.
Ruletto?
I.
Go better.
Hi.
Thank you. The first reading of ordinance 6444 passes and the second reading and consideration of the final adoption of this ordinance will be on March 21st. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.4, Zone Change 010-22, Pacific Northwest Land Company. Consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve an ordinance for a zone change from County FD-20, Future Development 20, the City MR-1 multi-dwelling residential zone on approximately 6.58 acre parcel of land that's being annexed at the city limits. Ordinance number 6445 is available. We'll have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 6445.
So moved to this.
Second, I remember. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Maybe we have a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Hi.
Alcare?
Hi.
Case?
Hi.
Ruletto?
I.
Go better.
Thank you. The first reading of ordinance 6445 passes and the second reading and final consideration of the final adoption of the ordinance will be March 21st. Second reading and modification, 017-22, reach crossing base two and modification, 018-22, reach crossing base three. Following a public hearing before the city council, for the second reading or requested planned unit development modifications for phases two and three to approve and increase ability rights for all lots. Approval allow us for increased cantilevers for all lots and deny removal of construction elements for potential accessory dwelling units within specific three unit townhouse buildings. Ordinance numbers sixty four thirty eight and sixty four thirty nine are available. Now, I would invite city attorney Chad Jacobs to make a comment here.
Mayor and council, Chad Jacobs from the Speaker's office. In consultation with planning staff and the developer, there's some proposals to potentially have an amendment to this ordinance. And given that the developer can't appear tonight, they've agreed to extend the hundred and twenty day rule, so we can consider this ordinance at your next meeting on the twenty first. So I would write it back that you pass a proposal motion and adopt a motion to move this item to your March twenty first meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jacobs? All right, then. Is there a motion to vote on the second reading ordinance after sixty four thirty eight until March twenty first?
So moved pace.
Second member. Thank you. Is there any discussion? And we have a roll call, please.
Councillor Sinclair?
Aye.
Alcare?
Aye.
Case?
Aye.
Ralento?
Aye.
Go better.
Aye. Thank you. So we will postpone then the second reading ordinance sixty four thirty eight. And we'll consider that at our March twenty first meeting. Very cool. Agenda item seven point six, Community Development Code Amendment zero zero three dash two two Witch Hazel Village South Plan District. Consider planning commission recommendation to approve Community Development Code amendments for adoption of the Witch Hazel Village South Plan District. Ordinance number sixty four forty is available. The council wishes to acknowledge as part of our motion that Hillborough staff is working with Metropolitan Land Group on a memorandum of understanding or a letter of intent to memorialize the February seventh, twenty twenty three Witch Hazel Village South policy on investing trips for land development, which summarizes the city policy on investing for land development in Witch Hazel. So do I have a motion to approve and enact ordinance number sixty four forty?
I do have a question on this.
Very good, yes.
Um. We heard from Mr. Furra of Metropolitan Land Group and his concern is about not having not having a memo part of the code. And so I just wanted to know if we could hear from staff on this. I know, I know you just spoke a little bit to the mayor, but I was just wanting to hear.
I think that would be great, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council again for record Colin Cooper, planning division director and Mayor and Councillor Case. The, thank you for the question. And Metropolitan Land Group has been a great partner, working for the city for a number of years now. Witch Hazel Village South Concept Plan and now the Non-Plan Plan District Plan has been a long road and we're right here at the end. And and we respect the request and the that MLG has made. We are recommending to council, I'll explain in a moment why, that you not codify this memo into code because the memo itself actually is a recitation and actually references the code that we would be putting it back into. It would not be, in our view, and this is what we told the planning commission, is why the planning same request was made of the planning commission. They chose to not include it in the codes due to the fact that this would not be best practice because suddenly we'd be putting references to memos that staff write in our community development code. And in fact, community development code is the regulatory tool that we use to develop. And very specifically, our community development code requires annexation agreements for all property that come into these new growth areas such as South Hillsborough or in which it will south in the future. It's in those annexation agreements whereby we determine the infrastructure necessary for the proposed development and whereby we establish the vesting of trips in that location. What we recommended and the mayor just wrote, I read this wording is that we acknowledged in your motion that there is a good faith effort to acknowledge the memo or MLG through an MOU or a letter of intent. We're working with our city attorney. Now, we hoped to have this turned around by this evening. We did not. That's what we would recommend as a way to to acknowledge the partnership and to acknowledge their quest to elevate the knowledge of the map so it doesn't fall away into the dustbin of history if you want.
That was my biggest concern was the dustbin of history. And I understand that we wouldn't want to put it in the CBC. That makes sense to me because then we'd be asked to include all memos, right? I also understand the exposure that MLG is under. As far as, it seems like the map is being agreed upon, right? But how are they assured moving forward that we'll want it?
Well, I think they're assured because our community development code gives us the direction to come together and sit down through that annexation agreement process. And we would have to change our entire code process because again, the memo just simply points back to our sections of our community development code that describe how transportation impact analysis are conducted and how we process trips that are already, when you come in, you sort of get in line. And then the second person in line has to take into account the first person in line's trips so that various infrastructure needs from that subsequently are accounted for. So they're, they're going to be okay, in our opinion.
In your opinion?
Well, okay.
They're gonna be okay. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Other questions? While I don't vote, Mr. Cooper, I do have a couple of questions. So are there other cities that do include this in ordinances?
I'm certainly, I'm not aware that any city would consider it best practice. And I've worked for five cities and I'm certain, I've talked to a lot of other professionals and I don't think it's common practice whatsoever to add a reference to memo. So the memo, again, just literally outlines our community development code and how we go through the process of vesting trips. We've been doing that now ever since we broke down on South Hillsborough. We use the annexation agreement as a really excellent tool to create the certainty for the developer that's at risk to ensure that their investments are protected. So we're, we're certainly very understanding of the full circle of investment that's there, the risk. And we're trying to make sure that it's very clear for all parties through that annexation agreement process.
Thank you. If an MOU wasn't, again, agreed upon, so we passed this tonight and an MOU wasn't agreed upon. Is this something, I don't know, there's a question for you, Chad. Could the ordinance be revised? You know, and and changed so that the memo was covered?
I think there is a bit of a legal charter question there, but I mean, there's a couple of different ways to start to answer this. But the, I think the way the staff suggested, the wording that he read there was to very publicly acknowledge that you're correct, you know, that staff is to finish this MOU and to acknowledge the memo. And so that will be done, you know. I think that's why we wanted to try to create a little bit of certainty through that motion process. And that's what the planning commission does. But as far as revisiting, you know, the ordinance would mean revisiting Witch Hazel Village Plan District as its entirety. And certainly the council through the city manager could seek to, you know, look at amendments of different portions of our code, others which is the South or another.
Thank you. Councillor, I was just gonna suggest to, rather than what you had made that set and delayed, you know, sort of the Metropolitan Land, the, they have certainty about, you know, whether that's you know, one option. It could be. Now, whether that is the best option is the other question. And so I guess I would, you know, as, you know, so would this, would this get us? You know, so we aren't in the hundred and twenty day or sixty day requirement with this, correct?
That's correct. This is a type four legislative process.
Okay.
I know that MLG would certainly like that certainty to get the process. Maybe I don't want to speak for them directly. I know that they generally don't want more certainty. But they've also generally reached the MOU or the letter of intent. And I think we're already there in principle, in parties. It's just a matter of, you know, given the workload, if you're unable to get that back in time for the steering seat here.
Thank you. So we don't yet have a motion. So we could, you know, make the motion. You know, based on the agenda item, we could consider if Councillor Van Beveren wanted, you know, it could turn his, you know, thought able to motion there as well. I, I think we should probably, my suggestion is to go ahead and motion. I have every confidence that MOU will be drafted and read to and I guess give it a little extra urgency and so. Yeah. Okay. So then do I have a motion to approve and enact ordinance number sixty four?
So moved pace.
Second member. Okay, is there any discussion? I, I, what I would like is to, when the MOU is agreed upon, I would like to be informed of that. And it's, and I guess just you know, see a copy of it, just so I know that it basically meets, you know, both the spirit and the intent of MLG's request. So any other discussion? And if not, we have a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Aye.
Alcare?
Aye.
Case?
Aye.
Ralento?
Aye.
Go better.
Aye. Very good. Ordinance number sixty four forty is adopted. Agenda item seven point seven, consider adopting an ordinance repealing ordinance number sixty four forty three. And adopting where advised boundaries for the three city council wards as required by section eight of the City of Hillsborough Charter. Ordinance number sixty four forty one is available. Do I have a motion to approve and enact ordinance number sixty four forty one?
So moved pace.
Second member. Is there any discussion? And we have a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Aye.
Alcare?
Aye.
Case?
Aye.
Ralento?
Aye.
Go better.
Aye. Thank you. Ordinance sixty four forty one is adopted and under new business. Consider approving an amendment that designed build master contract with M.A. Mortensen Company in the amount of ten million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars. In addition, staff is seeking authority to issue change orders against its contingency amount not to exceed seven hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and to approve any necessary transfers or corporations. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment and issue change orders?
So moved pace.
Second member. Thank you. Any discussion? Let all those in favor say aye.
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 Any of those say aye. And the motion carries. Then I have eight point twos, consider approving the new ballpark interim cost allocation agreement between the city and short season LLC, the Hillsborough Hops. Do I have a motion to approve the cost allocation agreement?
So moved pace.
Second member. Thank you. Any discussion or comments? I will just comment that I am really excited, you know, for the opportunity that we have, you know, with this. And I think it just positions us very, very well for the future. And I am so proud of the partnership that we have. I'm so grateful for the impact that the Hops are having on our community and not just in Washington County. And I'm really proud that not only do we have the only professional baseball in the metro area, but specifically that the professional baseball club is the Hillsborough Hops. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, go Hops.
Aye.
And all those in favor say aye. All those, I'm sorry. I'm so excited. All those in favor. I just want to hear it. Just wanted to hear everybody say yes and yes. Suzanne Allen, me and Jason. So those not in favor say aye. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item eight point three, consider a resolution to approve the qualified properties for the nonprofit owned or portable housing property tax exemption program for the twenty-three, twenty-four tax year. Resolution number twenty eight zero two is available. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty eight zero two?
So moved pace.
Second member. Both? And is there any discussion? And we have a roll call.
Councillor Sinclair?
Aye.
Alcare?
Aye.
Case?
Aye.
Ralento?
Aye.
Go better.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution twenty eight zero two is adopted. That our city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Vee, everyone. Two items I wanted to share tonight. First of all, this month's edition of City Views should have arrived in mailbox supplies for today. And inside our residents and businesses will find the city's Spanish language resources guide. This printed guide is the creation of bilingual communication specialist Beatrice Medel, who worked behind the scenes to gather input from Spanish-speaking community members, staff, and groups. The result is a culturally, commercially relevant resource guide focused on the community user experience designed to meet their needs and wants. The guide provides transportation resources for primary and ride connections and contact information for key community partners such as Adalantibo Hades, Central Botoal, Community Action, and Virginia Garcia. And also lists city phone numbers and services like the highlight internet service and how to reserve city parks for graduation parties. I want to thank Beatrice and our communication team for expanding our Spanish language communication, making this resource guide available at city facilities, community partners, and on the connected to the Hillsborough engagement webpage. And second, speaking of engagement, I want to thank our Parks and Recreation Department's special events team for turning the movie selection process for this year's picks in the Parks series over to the community. For the first time, community members can go to engage Hillsborough and to connect to the Hillsborough webpage to nominate and later vote in the picks in the park movies they want to see. You can suggest movies in four different categories through the end of March. And those four categories are youth and family with ratings of G and PG, Spanish language with grade ratings G through PG thirteen, teens with ratings PG and PG thirteen, and classic family favorites, which are rated G and PG two. You can also see some of the past movies shown for inspiration. And in April and early May, you'll be able to vote for one of the finalists in each category. Community vote will determine the winning movie shown in August at Hillsborough Parks. And this is one where you don't have to be eighteen years old to vote. And so I invite all frozen and condo and lot of fan Hillsborough schools to let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And last of all, community members who want to be a part of the gauge or engage as city council matters and sign up to receive the happening in Hillsborough email newsletter which comes out Monday for every city council meeting. They're also available in Spanish language through our Facebook and the Hutos email newsletter. At the conclusion of our council meeting, the city council will meet in executive session under ORS one nine two point six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law for public inspection. No action may be taken in executive session, and if action needs to be taken, council will reconvene and do so in a regular session. While the news media representatives and staff designated by the city council will attend the executive session. So with that, our city council meeting is adjourned. The executive session will begin at eight twenty-five in person and with be a thank you.